This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everyone. The time is 7:30 and this is the June 10, 2021 work session of the Allendale Mayor and Council. Welcome to everyone who's joining us via video and teleconference. We ask that you please mute your devices at this time so as not to distract from the business of the meeting. There'll be several opportunities for the public to be heard tonight and we'll advise you at the appropriate times. Michelle, please read the Open Public Meetings Act announcements.
Sure. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. Meeting dates for the year confirmed at the annual meeting are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and on the borough website, published in the record within the first 10 days of the new year, and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger.
Great. Michelle, please conduct the roll call.
Councilwoman Holman?
Here.
Councilman O'Connell?
Here.
Councilman O'Toole?
Here.
Councilman Sasso? He's muted. Councilman Strouch?
I am here.
Councilwoman Wilsinski?
Here.
And Mayor Bernstein?
Here. Thank you, Michelle. First of three opportunities tonight for the public to comment. Anyone for the public wishing to speak, please state your name and address and you'll have a three-minute time limit to address the governing body. I don't see anyone here, nor online. Okay. So we are going to be presenting our municipal budget by our Borough Auditor Paul Lurch. He is due in at 7:45, so I'm going to skip that part and come back to that as soon as he gets in. Agenda review. Today, we have a relatively light session agenda. In relation to the adoption of the 2021 municipal budget, ordinance 21-09 is listed for public hearing and adoption, as well as resolution 21-158, which authorizes the reading of it, the budget by title only, and not all 75 pages, which is a good thing. It'd be a long night. We will also open for public comment on the budget prior to resolution 21-159, which adopts the budget. So Paul will speak to that. Lisa will speak to that. And Matt, if you want to, I will hold off on that for your comment. There are six resolutions on the consent agenda for approval. 21-160, appoint Borough Professional Tax Appeal Attorney Levi J. Cool, attorney at law from the firm of Huntington Bailey LLP. Our longtime tax appeal attorney, Joanne Ratcherty, has retired, and we will be appointing Levi Cool to replace her. On behalf of the borough, I thank Joanne for her outstanding service and wish her all the best in her retirement. I'd also like to welcome Levi to our team. 21-161, endorse Bergen County Community Development Grant Project, generators at Allendale Housing Inc., special needs facilities, BCUW Madeline Housing Partners. We're proud to support this grant application to Bergen County Community Development for purchase and installation of three emergency generators at our special needs housing. 21-162, approve the Holiday Observers 2021 July 4th celebration. We had been on pins and needles for a while as to what was going to be done, but with the relaxing of the restrictions and the last Holiday Observer meeting, et cetera, it looks like all systems go. So this resolution officially approves the Holiday Observer's fireworks display and July 4th celebration. We're excited that they're able to resume the festivities this year, and I think I speak for everyone when I say we're all looking forward to their spectacular fireworks display. Either Matt or Ed, both who are Holiday Observers, I invite either of you to speak if you'd like to.
Just on behalf of the observers, you know, thank you to everyone for working with us to make this happen. We've been trying to do things as normal, quote unquote, as possible. And with the lifting restrictions, it looks like we can have a traditional Allendale July 4th celebration. So, thank you.
Great. Ed, anything you'd like to add to that?
I'd just like to thank the Mayor and Council, Ron Kistner and OEM, because we were touch and go there, whether we're going to have fireworks or even, let alone 4th of July festivities. And they walked us through there and we had several scenarios set up until the restrictions were lifted. And we were going to make it happen regardless. So I thank all efforts involved for that.
That's great. Thank you. And we all thank you on behalf of the residents and the borough. 21-163, appoint Administrative Assistant, part-time hourly, in the Clerk's Office, Judith Collins. We are happy to have Judith Collins joining us for the summer as an administrative assistant in helping in the Clerk's Office. 21-164, authorize the tax collector to prepare and mail estimated tax bills. This resolution authorizes our tax collector to prepare and mail estimated tax bills. Lisa, you and I discussed that earlier today. Is there anything that you'd like to add to that?
No. No, that's fine.
Good. Yeah, there's enough to talk about as far as the budget. So I just wanted to... 21-165, approve June 10, 2021 bill list. I've reviewed the bill list. Amy, Matt, great. Okay. So now, while we're waiting for Paul Lurch to come on to do the budget presentation, let's do council reports. So Councilman O'Connell, why don't you start?
Thank you, Mayor. As far as calls into headquarters, we had, as of date, 6,249. 911 calls, we had 694. Fire was 61, and AVAC was 164. Vic Portoloma completed instructor training in optics for the new handgun. Our new officer is graduating the academy on June 17, Nicole DePasquale. She did well in the academy. I heard they made her squad leader. I think everyone received an email from Ron Kistner on the sergeant's test and interview rankings. We're still working on the state mandated body cameras for the police officers. And the chief's test will be in August, and there are eight officers that can take that test. That's all I have, Mayor.
Great. Thank you very much, Ed. Councilman Sasso, would you like to give your report?
Yes, thank you. Good evening. So the Land Use community has not met since our last council meeting. In fact, we probably should have had one yesterday, but it's kind of slipped off the calendar, so I will schedule that as soon as possible. Although Councilman Strouch and I have been talking a lot lately, I co-chair on Land Use. We're very focused, thanks to Mr. Jim Wright, our celery farm marsh warden, on the issue of poison bait traps in town. And also, Councilman Strouch and I have been talking about a noise ordinance as well, but we'll take that up at the next committee meeting, or an amendment to that. But on the poison bait side, it brought up a secondary issue of open dumpsters in Allendale and, you know, really in garbage that was not out and prepared properly. So I had a Highlands Wrestling Dinner that night. I couldn't make the Board of Health meeting, but my co-chair, Councilman Strouch, did make the Board of Health meeting with Mr. Jim Wright. And maybe Jim Strouch, would you like to talk about that a little bit? How that went? I know it went well.
Yes, thank you, Steve. Last Thursday night, the Allendale Board of Health had their monthly meeting. And Nadine, it was the first meeting, Board of Health meeting, that I've ever attended. And, you know, we're lucky. We have dedicated volunteers that are making sure that the establishments in town are operating to state sanitary guidelines. And so I attended the meeting, and they were very receptive to making sure that the establishments that they inspect properly cover their trash receptacles of any size, because they're very much aware of the fact that when you have trash available to rodents, you're basically feeding the rodents and you're increasing the rodent population in your town inadvertently. The poison bait stations have become a problem. Jim Wright has brought it to our attention. We're going to be working on a presentation that we can make to the entire council. But in the meantime, the Board of Health will be keeping an eye on the trash receptacles to make sure they're properly sealed and take away the food source from the rodents, which is the, you know, the best way to deal with this and the most sanitary way to deal with this. So Steve and I are going to be working on the poison bait side, because the fact that we're putting poison out in town, this doesn't make sense to me. And Steve and I will come to the council with our ideas and plans at some future date. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Jim. And for those that may have not heard this before, the poison bait station is very effective for killing rats. What happens is that the poison rat runs up and dies, and then is picked up by a raptor. And Jim Wright has documented that a couple, at least one endangered species, a raptor, died because he was exposed, or the bird was exposed to this poison. It also kills foxes and minks and other things that might pick up these rodents. And it's really the lazy man's way of doing things, because you set out a poison trap and that's it. You forget it. Unlike a snap trap, that has to be checked and emptied. It's kind of gross, I guess, but too bad. That's what you have to do. But to Councilman Strouch's point earlier, secure your garbage and you'll cut down the rat population in half pretty quickly. And you may not need a trap at all, but you certainly don't need these poison bait traps. And I'll tell you, as, for someone that grew up in Bergen County, I never in my life thought I would see a bald eagle flying over my house, but I've seen it twice. And if I see a dead bald eagle because of a poison bait trap, I don't think anybody is going to be too happy about that.
I'm sure Jim Wright is very happy you're taking this on. He, I know, a couple of years ago, we were looking at these poison traps over by Borough Line Road, and it was a problem then. So I'm sure he's super happy that you're taking this on. So, great job.
I'm super happy that he brought to our attention, because we have some wonderful open space in town, and our celery farm is, you know, envious to other communities, right? So we certainly have to protect our wildlife, and this is an easy way to do it. More to come on this.
Great. Thank you for your report. Amy, would you like to give your... We're going to skip, intentionally skip, Councilwoman Holman. Councilwoman Wilsinski, would you like to give your report?
Absolutely. So 220, 230 has actually been a little bit quiet now since the closing of 230. We are now, we're working on the closing of 220. However, there was a lot of open items for the county, so we're not on the June meeting, and we will be approaching the agenda for the July meeting. After that approval, there's a 45-day waiting period, and then the closing will commence. So we're talking about demo now, probably September-ish, hopefully. And so that'll be moving. It'll be, it's a little slow now, but it's going to be super, super fast once we have that closing. Crestwood Lake, registration is strong. We had a slow Memorial Day with all the rain, but luckily, everybody's back on target. We are almost at the full revenue that we expect for the lake. We are having our band nights start again. Our first one is next Saturday. It's a band called Blend. Not in our band shell yet. We're going to hold that off for local bands, but it will be under the pavilion. So we look forward to that. The band nights are open to all residents, not just lake members. Of course, Richie and Ray have been working hard to keep the lake beautiful, and we're just happy that everybody is joining the lake. And because all the registrations being lifted made it a lot easier this year. The playground, we opened it up on time on Memorial Day, as we expected. This is the first phase of the playground. I want to thank all the kids and the parents that helped us pick out this playground. We also met with some more parents. Councilwoman Holman and I met with some more parents this afternoon, who also helped us with more ideas. So we're going to try to incorporate some of those into the next phases. So more fun to come with our playground. I look forward to our budget. And lastly, our 9/11 memorial, we still have our paver program open. I am still in search for a speaker for our program. It is the 20-year anniversary, and we're going to be looking to beautify the park as always, with lots of flags, and really make this a special year, a special ceremony this year. So if anybody has any suggestions of speakers, I'm all ears. So I've been reached, I reached out to a couple, so it's a little tougher this year, but we're looking for a good one. And that's it.
Great. Thank you, Councilman O'Toole.
Certainly. Obviously, the biggest thing this evening is the budget adoption. Once again, I would just like to reiterate how difficult this process was. This is only my third budget being this directly involved, but I can't imagine one being more difficult than this. Where we started and where we wound up is just unbelievable. And a huge debt of gratitude to the Finance Committee, to Lisa, to Paul Lurch, to Ron, to everybody who's just amazing, where we started and where we wound up. So the Administration, Finance, and HR Committee met earlier this evening. We covered quite a bit of ground, including conversation on this evening's budget, some expenditures which we are required to incur, such as the body worn cameras that Councilman O'Connell mentioned. We also covered a few personnel matters and finished up with a plan to open Borough Hall for regular business next month. So all good things moving in a positive direction. That's all I got this evening.
Great. Thank you very much. Councilman Strouch, would you like to give your report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Bernstein. The DPW report, although there haven't been any storms that have, you know, been what we would call major storms, the DPW is still dealing with a lot of storm-related cleanup, because it seems like anytime it rains and the wind blows, trees are getting knocked down. The most noticeable, last week, a tree got knocked down on West Crescent near Park Avenue and knocked the power out for a big part of town. And it took a Herculean effort to get the power back on. And the police had been sending out some texts that I saw pictures of with, you know, five, six trucks handling it. And of course, the DPW is always there assisting wherever possible. The mulch pile, the recycling center is still humming along. You know, the street sweeper is doing a great job. You know, the DPW, it's, you know, they're out there every day working. And then Ron Kistner, of course, has been super busy. He's going to be meeting with our Borough Engineer, Mike Freeland, to finalize the paving program for this year, the 2021 paving program. And Ron's also been working on the first auction of the year for the borough equipment and vehicles that have lived out their life and expectancy and usefulness. And that's one of the things that Ron has always been doing, and I appreciate, is when equipment is not being used, and that's auction it, bring some money in, and more importantly, don't let things get cluttered. And that's a good thing. And Dan Richards and Ron, have actually begun working on the snow removal program or plans for the 2021, 2022 snow season, which, you know, you're always trying to be six months ahead, and I appreciate that Dan Richards and Ron are on top of that. So other than that, all is working well, and I'll end my report there tonight.
Great. Thank you. So I specifically did not want to have Councilwoman Holman start and then stop.
That's okay.
So if you want to... Paul, your timing is impeccable. So take yourself off. I'm going to introduce you, and I'm going to give you the floor. I know you're, I think, coming from another budget meeting. So I'm going to set the stage for you, Paul, and then turn it over to you. Okay?
Thanks, Matt. Yep, thank you.
Tonight, during our regular session, we'll have the public hearing and adoption of our 2021 municipal budget. Our Borough Auditor, Paul Lurch of Lurch-Vincian-Higgins, will be making a presentation right now. And I want to, I would be thanking all the people the Councilman O'Toole thanked. It was a collective effort. CFO, Paul Lurch, Finance Committee, everyone, all department heads, et cetera, all the employees. So we can thank them later, but Paul, please start your presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. So I know Michelle is going to put together, at least put the slide up on the screen, I believe. And what I'll do is I'll just start by going through this, and then, obviously, if anybody has any questions, by all means, we'll just address them. But I think overall, it's been, obviously, it's a difficult year, you know, dealing with COVID and some of the issues. I think, though, when you look at it over a long period of time, certainly the borough of Allendale is financially strong and is doing well. And I just want to get into some of the items here. Obviously, big picture-wise, ratables increased a sizable amount, an extremely large amount, honestly, 6.8% from, you know, $1,684 to $1,800,000. And that's a tremendous increase, which is great. And that's really what you'd like to see. You know, it's a $160 million increase in ratables. So certainly, that's what you'd like to see, and I think that's what's going to produce future stability in a community. It's always the increase of the ratables. All right. But if I dive in here a little bit, we can get into some of the particulars as we go forward. So what we've done is similar to what I presented in the previous years, and this is just a very topical overview of the revenue breakdown, and we're identifying the 2021 proposed budget and comparing that to the 2020 budget. And we can see that our revenues or the total budget is up $703,000. And then we break it down based upon the specific categories. So the utilization of surplus is down slightly, and that's because the overall surplus had decreased from the previous years. So we're always reliant upon, you know, surplus to balance our budget. And it's definitely a variable based upon the usage, and that usage really depends upon what the ending surplus balance was. So we're slightly down there on the usage side. Municipal revenues are really all the other revenues that aren't specifically identified. So it's going to have anything that's not identified in other areas. Specifically here, it's fees, permits, interest, and those type of items. Our proposed 21 budget is down $145,000 from the previous year's budget. A lot of this has to do with COVID-19. When you look at the realized revenues in 2020, comparing that to what was budgeted, and taking into consideration the statute that basically permits us to use anticipated revenues equal to the prior year's realized or cash revenues. So we did see some drops in some of those revenues from the previous years. Interest is down about $88,000. Construction code, I'm sorry, construction code is down about another $88,000. The pilot program is good news, and it's wonderful news that that did occur, closing on one piece of that property. So now we're able to anticipate in our budget new revenue for the pilot program, and that amounts to about $108,000. And then we have fees. Again, some of the fees have decreased from the previous year as well. So overall, that's what's making up that decrease in the anticipated revenues from what we anticipated in the previous year. State aid, state aid is held harmless again. This is what we received from the state of New Jersey, has not changed in years. That funding is a main constant, the $1,068,000. Miscellaneous revenues is the catch-all of anything that we haven't identified or won't identify. And here, it's capital surplus, it's also debt service reserve, cable fees, those type of items. We're up slightly here, $47,000, and we had a swing in two different areas. The use of our capital surplus is down 80, but we also have the increase in the reserve of debt service, which is up 140. So those are the two major swings in that component. Delinquent taxes, what we're budgeting is relative to the same as what we budgeted the year before. And then, of course, now we're down to general taxation, general taxation, which now here includes the library tax, is up $876,000 from the year before. The next slide simply takes the revenues and allocates it from the collection standpoint. So, you know, typical municipality in our area is going to rely heavily upon the tax side, percentage-wise. This is very typical of what we're seeing out there and consistent from what you've had from year to year. So primarily, it's general taxation of 71%. And it just shows how the pie is broken up. The state's only providing 7% of aid to our municipality. The next slide deals with the tax levy cap. As we all know, the state of New Jersey has instituted a cap on the actual tax levy. But as most of us know, that there are always exceptions to the rule. We are limited to 2%. However, there are exceptions that are allowable, and then there's cap banks. If we don't use the full amount of the cap levy from year to year, you get the bank in up to a three-year period. And what this schedule is basically saying is that the amount, the first line is the amount to be raised by taxes that we have in the current budget. That's the $10,316.05. And then what is the maximum amount that we can raise in tax dollars if you wanted to? So the maximum amount by law is the $10,632,000. So we still have $303,149 of room to raise in additional tax. Not suggesting that you're doing that, but it is in a cap bank. The next slide is on the spending analysis. And here, we just try to summarize the budget by department or category here, as opposed to doing it by salaries and O&amp;E and those types of items. Just a different way of looking at the total budget. As you can see on the bottom right, that the total budget increase is $703,545. Obviously, that matches the revenue difference as well. So we're comparing the 21 proposed to the adopted 20. The very first line, general government, general government is a catch-all for anything and everything that's not specifically identified here. So it's good to include mayor, council, administration, clerk, finance, tax, legal, accounting, engineering, tax appeals, anything and everything else that's not in a specific category. And when you look at it, it's actually almost completely flat. So there's very small bump of not even 1%, so 1/10 of a percent. So that is good to see, it's stable. Insurance, insurance covers, obviously, health insurance, as well as general liability insurance. We're up slightly here, 2%, not a major increase. The largest increase, and this is typical again of most communities in New Jersey, in Bergen County specifically, is going to be the police services line. They're up 7.7%. I think that what happens is, is that, you know, most people that aren't familiar with police salaries and contracts, you know, we think we're capping or we're limited to 2% or whatever the contract says, but that's rarely the reality, because what happens is you have other people climbing through the various steps. And when you take the combination of the step increases along with the percentage increase, they typically range in that close to 5% increase. So that's why you're seeing a sizable increase here. Fire and emergency services, which includes first aid, is relatively flat. Obviously, parks and recreation is relatively flat. And that includes, obviously, Crestwood Lake in that particular line item. Public Works includes Public Works, as well as buildings and grounds, a slight decrease here, which is nice to see, of $43,000. Sewer and solid waste, that's the fee that we pay to the Northwest Bergen Utility Authority for sewage disposal. That was up slightly, $34,000. We have the recycling, recycling costs are up slightly at $44,000, and then we have solid waste as well. So that's making up the 128, solid waste was up about $54,000 as well. And then we go down to utilities and bulk services. This is nothing more than electric, gas, those type of expenses, relatively flat. Library contribution is set by statute, so it's relatively unchanged as well. And then we get into statutory and fixed charges, and that's really going to be the pension, social security, those type of items. We're up roughly $59,000. And that's because we had a little bit of a swing. So the pension expense that we're paying is up about $102,000 from year to year. That's based on the bill that we get from the Division of Pensions, but that was offset because we had a decrease of roughly $50,000 on an emergency that we had to fund in 2020 that we're not funding in 2021, because we didn't have an emergency during our fiscal 20-year. And then we go down to one of the larger increases here again is debt service and the capital improvement fund component. It's up at $276,000. You know, this is really made up of the increase of bond principal of $245,000, note principal of $112,000. And then we have a reduction in the net interest expense of roughly $61,000.
So Paul, what I want to do, because it's 8 o'clock, I'm going, and statutorily, I want to end the work. want to end the work session, so just bear with us, let's stop there. So we're going to end the work session, go into the regular session. Can we pick up the presentation right there?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Need a motion.
Okay, so I request a motion to adjourn the work session.
So much.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. So ends the work session, and we will start the regular session, and Paul will go as quickly as possible. We will follow up with that. So the town time is now, Michelle, are you ready?
Yes.
Okay, the time is now eight o'clock, and this is the June 10, 2021 regular session of the Allendale Mayor and Council. Welcome to everyone who is joining us via video and teleconference. At this time, I ask the public to please mute their devices so as not to distract from the business of the meeting. There'll be two opportunities during this meeting for the public to speak, and we will advise you at the appropriate times. Michelle, please read the Open Public Meetings Act announcement.
Sure. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year confirmed at the annual meeting are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and on the borough website, published in the record within the first 10 days of the new year, and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News on Star Ledger.
Great. If you would all please rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Michelle, please conduct the roll call.
Sure. Woman Homan, here. Councilman O'Connell.
Here.
Councilman O'Toole.
Here.
Councilman Sasso.
Here.
Councilman Strouch.
Here.
Councilwoman Wilsonske.
Here.
And Mayor Bernstein.
Here. Thank you. And at this time, what I want to do is Paul, our auditor, Paul Lurch, was in the process of giving the presentation of the budget, so if you could pick up where you left off, now would be the appropriate time.
Thank you, Mayor. So I left off on this page where we're analyzing the budget spending, and I was working my way towards the bottom, and we were talking about debt service and capital improvements. So we can see that that's up 276,000, but I do want to note that if you go back to the revenue side, we also had an increase in the revenue on the reserve for payment of debt, which is basically offsetting the debt of 140,000. So the net increase really in debt service is 136,000, it's not the 276,000. I just wanted to point that out. And the last line is the reserve from collected taxes, it's up $25,000, and that grows annually, and that's a statutory line item, it's a non-spending line item. And I think just for the public's edification, reserve from collected is there because our the municipalities in the state of New Jersey, obviously Allendale, we collect the taxes for all the taxing entities. So in other words, we're paying and collecting on behalf of the county and the two schools. We're the we're the vehicle that's collecting and making those payments by statute. We are required to pay them 100% of the liability or of that levy. Obviously, there is going to be situations where we're not going to collect 100% of the taxes. We're always going to have people that aren't paying on time. And then on top of that, we're we're also going to incur additional adjustments to those proposed levies based on successful appeals. So the combination of all of that requires us to levy more money than we would need to just satisfy our own budget because we always have to levy that additional amount, which is going to provide us a cash flow to make the payments to those taxing entities and also provide us the ability to pay our own bills. So moving along, I'm going to go to page six. I'm not going to go through the details of this, but this is just a slide to give everybody an idea, you know, where does where does the where does the money go, so to speak, on the appropriation side? You know, we we have funds that we're raising, where are we spending most of that money? Again, I think when you look down at the police services, again, that's going to be very typical, that that's going to be the largest component of most municipal budgets. And then solid waste is up there, and water disposal is up there as well. But this is again typical of of a municipality in northern New Jersey. Next slide, page seven. As I indicated before, we have a statutory limitation on what we can raise in the tax levy. And if we go back over 30 years, they started with a limitation on what we can appropriate in our spending side. And similar to the other cap calculation, there are exceptions again. And what's happening is that if we do not meet the maximum amount that we can spend, we have the ability to bank those amounts for future use if needed. And we also do a cap index rate ordinance, which allows us to go to the maximum 3.5%. And again, it's nothing more than a rainy day type ability to expend more than than perhaps you might need. But again, it certainly doesn't indicate that we have any intentions of using the excess number here. What it's simply saying is it's telling the public that our current spending is is within cap of $9,816,000, and we're permitted to go to $10,88,14. So we're $271,000 below the appropriation of spending cap side. And then we get into the apportionment and the tax effect. I'm going to go to the next slide. We're kind of showing this this data different ways over the next three slides here. Our focus, when I say our focus, which is the municipal focus, the mayor and council, their focus is obviously always on the municipal side. But just for perspective, we've put in everybody's tax rate in here, and we're showing what the 2020 actual is, that's the $2.41.3, and what the proposed tax rate would be for 2021 based upon our adopted budget if it is successful to be adopted tonight. And we estimated the county at 5%. That budget, I don't believe that's been finalized yet. We do have the actual school numbers because those A4F documents were available, so those are actual numbers on the school side. And I will note that when you look at this particular schedule, and I have some notes on the side here, but you see a slight decrease in the overall tax rate. And the overall impact on an average home, overall, and we'll get into the municipal side, but it happens to be the same number, it's just coincidence how that works out. The municipal side is going to see an average homeowner see a tax increase of $232. In fact, that's going to be the overall tax rate when you include the county and the school. It's going to go up roughly $231 on an average home. So we had some some slight, really no increase, there was a net effect of almost zero between the other two components, and then we have our local increase. So the overall increase this year should be about 231 on an average house.
What's the average house number that you put in for this year, Paul?
Sure. Here.
699, I believe it was.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I get it 100% correct. So the average house for 2021 is 689,966. Last year's average house was 663,817. That's a sizable increase of 3.9%, $26,000.
Thank you.
Okay. The next slide. Just letting the viewers know and the public know, where does the dollar go? Again, this is very typical, has not changed for us. The needle really doesn't move here much. It might be a penny here, a penny there from year to year, but at the end of the day, 26 cents or 26% of the total tax bill is 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 going to the municipality, 11 cents to the county, and then the bulk of that winds up going to the school. And then the last exhibit here is kind of kind of redundant, but I have it here, just the local side. As it turns out, the the percentage increase is really the same for the overall. So on a municipal side, we're looking at 232, that's what the average homeowner would have paid in 20 based upon that average assessed value and what the homeowner in '21 will pay based upon that person's average assessed value. That concludes the presentation. I will, I will also say that we did get approval today from the Division of Local Governmental Services to adopt the budget.
Okay.
That didn't happen until, believe it or not, until somewhere around noon time, where I was going back and forth with the division. And I just want to talk a little bit about the new monies that became available, which I'm sure everybody knows about, we've been talking about, and that's the American Rescue Relief Money. And what was happening is is that because we had the deferred charge, we we put a deferred charge for the COVID losses in our financial statements, they were going back and forth whether or not we had to amend our budget and include that as a revenue to fund that deferred charge. At the end of the day, they told us we were okay to adopt the way it is. That's going to be based upon a revenue loss fall, a revenue shortfall calculation that we've done, and that's going to work itself through, that's going to be a four-year calculation. So in essence, what's going to happen is our deferred charge that we utilized is $244,000 for the shortfall in the in the COVID revenues. That funding is going to start in 2022, and it's going to be paid over a five-year period. If we didn't receive any of this relief act money, we'd be forced to budget one-fifth of that starting in 2022. But what happened now is that because the the guidance just came out earlier this week on the usage of the money, and one of the ways to use the money, and there are lots of different ways, but one of the main ways is to use it for revenue shortfall. It's a calculation that we did based upon documents that were sent by the Division of Local Governmental Services, and as indicated, that's going to be over a four-year period. But I will tell you that I did the calculation for 2020, which generally uses 2019 as a baseline, and then they're allowing us to increase that by 4.1%. And then we calculate that compared to what we had in overall revenues in 2020 versus the 2019 baseline. We have to exclude state and federal grants, we have to exclude surplus, and we're excluding anything that's coming through from any of the other funds that we have, basically paying ourselves from another location. So that revenue shortfall that we calculated is roughly $132,000. And that's going to happen, and that that calculation is going to happen for the next three years. So we're going to be able to use part of that American Relief Money to fund the COVID deferred charge that we have to raise in future years, but based upon this calculation. But my argument to the division today was why force us to go through and do the amendment and 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 force the municipality to pay additional fees because the budget was done, it would have required an amendment to the document, it would have required another resolution. At the end, she agreed with me and said, listen, at this point, there's no logical reason why I'm going to force you to use the money in 2021 when we're not we're not requiring you to make a payment until 2022 on that deferred charge. So when we develop the 2022 budget, we're going to have the $131,000 loss from from '20. We're also going to have some other kind of loss from 2021, I presume, and that combination will be the amount that we'll use to hopefully eliminate and fund that deferred charge. And then any money that's remaining after that, there are other uses that you can do for obviously expenditures. Some of the basic ones is going to be for improvements to the utility sewer and water systems. So that's kind of an overview of what's happening this week with with the relief money, how it was going to affect us. Certainly, if you have any questions down the road, I mean, it just came out, and we're still learning, that really, there really isn't anything but general guidance that was established. How it's implemented is is still something that that they're working through. But overall, that is the big picture. We can certainly talk about it down the road if we want to have a finance meeting or come back to a mayor council.
Great, thank you. No, I certainly appreciate that, and we will, and we will be back. I mean, as you know, Finance Committee, we're hands-on, and and we have, we always have questions, so you, we do intend to circle back on that. With respect to the budget, I'm going to ask you, if you can, when we get to the the voting part, we do open it up to the public, so if there's questions from the public at that time, I'd love to have you still here. And I would like to, at this time, probably a good time to express our sincere gratitude to you, our auditor, and to our CFO, Lisa Mayer. Collectively, your wealth of knowledge and guidance has been, has been.
Invaluable.
Invaluable to us. Yeah, so, right, Matt said it right. Where we started, I remember we started very, very early this year, even before probably we should have, we typically start, and and the guidance and expertise has been great, we relied upon it heavily. Thank you very much. So we were a little out of order. I'm going to now go to public comment on agenda items only. So I'm going to jump back into the agenda of the regular session. Any public comments on agenda items only? Not seeing anyone.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Yes.
Does that include the budget, or you're doing that separate?
Well, so I would say we do open it up to the to the public when we, so if you want, I would, a public comment on 2021 local municipal budget. So your comments would be.
Technically, the open is going to be on the ordinance for second reading.
Right. So it would be appropriate now. Okay, so Mark, if you want to ask it now, fire away.
Sure, thank you, Mayor and Council. Mr. Lurch, I just had a quick question. I understand that there were some additional costs because of COVID, but you had mentioned that there were some revenue reductions. Can you give some examples of where that occurred? You're on mute, Mr. Lurch. Thank you.
Sure. So I'm assuming, I guess I just want to redirect your question for a second. Are you asking me what were the revenue shortfalls from what we anticipated, or are we talking about budget to budget?
Well, during your discussion, there was a line item about revenue, and you had mentioned briefly that there was a reduction because COVID. I was wondering if you could give some brief examples of what those reductions may have been.
Yeah, sure, I can. So I'm just looking through the budget document. Some of the area of reduction was fees and permits. Let me just look at my other page.
I mean, I can answer that. I mean, the construction fees were about $95,000 hit, our interest, I think, was like about a $90,000 hit, and your our court was about $43,000 hit.
We were down about $288,000.
Right. Thanks, Amy.
How was the court affected, Amy?
Court was around 43K.
No, I mean, what what would have been the reduction then?
No.
I'm sorry?
$11,000.
You you said there was a reduction in in court of.
Court fees.
Fees. Revenue that we get from our municipal court fees. So when people get fined, we get a portion of the money, and it went down substantially, as did the construction office, was, you know, the money coming in went down substantially.
So the the revenues, construction code fees were down 87,000, municipal court fines and costs were down 11,000, interest on investments and deposits were down about 88,000.
Okay, thank you.
I might have clumped something else in with the courts, I'm not sure what I did.
Mark, courts are down because people were staying home.
Yeah, okay, understand. All right, thank you.
Great, thank you. Anyone else?
Municipal parking.
Right. Okay.
Nobody was parking there.
All right, so now we are going to ordinance for second reading and public hearing ordinance Michelle, please read the title of ordinance 21-09.
Sure. The following ordinance published here with was first read by title only on May 13, 2021, and posted on the bulletin board of the lobby of the municipal building and borough website. This is ordinance 21-09, calendar year 2021, ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank in accordance with NJSA 40A:4-45.14.
That's easy for you to say. Open the floor for public comment on ordinance 21-09. I would request the council member to make a motion to move to pass and adopt on second and final reading ordinance 21-09. Notice of same shall be published according to law.
So moved.
Thank you, Matt. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Amy. Michelle, please conduct a roll call.
Councilwoman Homan?
Yeah.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilman Strouch?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wilsonske?
Yes.
Great. Next, Resolutions 21-158. Read budget by title only. Request a motion to approve Resolution 21-158.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Amy, second. Thank you. Michelle, please conduct a roll call.
Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilman Stouch?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wosinski?
Yes.
Great, thank you. And now is public comment on 2021 local municipal budget. Not seeing anyone. I would request a motion to approve Resolution 21-159.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Amy. Michelle, please conduct the roll call.
Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilman Stouch?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wosinski?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Now the consent agenda that I discussed and went over in the work session, so I would request a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Liz, second. Jim, did I hear you, second?
Yep.
I did. Michelle, please conduct a roll call.
Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilman Stouch?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wosinski?
Yes.
Great. Any unfinished business? Any new, any new business? No? So committee reports, so?
Hooray, water.
Yes.
Hi, everybody. It's so nice to be back in Borough Hall and actually see the faces of everybody here. Awesome. There is huge news for the Water Committee to share with the council and with residents. As we've been sharing during our community water meetings over the past year, selling the Allendale Water System has been one of the options we've been evaluating for the future of Allendale Water. And so on Friday, May 28, we had the opportunity to open up the responses we received from their request for the bid for the sale of the Allendale Water System. The highest responsible bidder has been determined to be SUEZ, who is our current operator and management company for operations and management agreements. There are many requirements of the RFP that went out. I'm not going to discuss all of those this evening, but I will share a few highlights from the SUEZ response. SUEZ offered a $18 million purchase price. We had asked for a five- and 10-year binding rate stabilization proposal with a ceiling average of a 3% increase over, and I'm just, of the five or the 10 years, with no given year being allowed to have greater than a 5% increase. And this was done so that Allendale residents will know their water rates through 2031. SUEZ came in, I would say, well below the required annual average increase ceiling of that 3% over a 10-year period. So I will be sharing the actual rate increases in detail during future public meetings. This is important information for residents to understand. I do feel that this proposal is very fair to Allendale Water customers, myself being one of them. Another positive attribute of the SUEZ proposal is the commitment to infrastructure improvements, including and beyond the PFAS treatment, which is needed in the near term for Allendale, and one that I have given the public information on during the previous presentations, which are posted online. The additional improvements that they have proposed will also allow the system to function more efficiently, which certainly is a benefit. So we're working through all of the details of the opportunity with SUEZ, and the conversations have been very positive. I feel good about this opportunity. It is very important that all residents understand that Allendale cannot sell the system to SUEZ for $18 million without a referendum question to do so passing at the general election this fall. So it is a mission, and it is important, that all of the residents of Allendale learn about what the offer brings to Allendale and what the next 10 years and beyond should look like for Allendale Water. Obviously, we can't know everything, but there's a lot of information. So please, you know, those of you that are on this meeting now and are council, make sure you ask people to come to the public meetings to reach out to myself and to Steve Sasso and the Water Committee, Ari Bernstein, so everyone, we want to make sure we're sharing as much as possible. So the next steps is clarifying and solidifying the understandings of the bid proposal into a purchase and sale agreement. Once we have that purchase and sale agreement prepared, we will be bringing it as an ordinance to council for approval, and that is targeted to occur on July 9. So the public knows the purchase and sale agreement will not be signed until after we have public meetings to allow for input, which is both a benefit for SUEZ as well as for the borough, because we do want to make sure we, you know, are covering all our bases. Again, you know, no sale can be done until a referendum question passes on the November election. All of this work is being done to ensure the public has an opportunity to clearly understand the offer from SUEZ, so that when residents go into the voting booth in November, they can make an informed choice when they respond to this referendum question. So with that, I'd like to remind the public and the mayor and council that we will have our first public meeting about this specifically on June 16. You're welcome to send me questions beforehand. We will do this June 16 meeting as a Zoom meeting, but we'll look forward to other, you know, future meetings in person as well. There will be an email sent via Constant Contact, and also the information will be included in the June newsletter. So with that, I will wrap it up with a huge thank you to the members of the Water Committee and to our consultants. This was a large and important undertaking to get where we, you know, are today, and everybody really stepped up, so thank you so much. And they continue to be excellent advocates for the Allendale residents. So thanks so much. And then my last piece of important information is that it's Matt O'Toole's birthday tomorrow, so just want to make sure if anybody sees Matt, I'm about, they say, happy birthday, Matt.
Great.
So thanks so much, and, you know, again, feel free to contact me.
Thank you, thank you for that report.
I'll be here. Thank you for Lydia Snowbuck.
Right. Councilman Stouch, right, I think you and I, you and I are the last two. So you want to give your report?
Can we comment on Lissa's report yet, or should we do that after?
Um.
I mean, what if we have questions? No?
Right.
You can do it now?
Sure. I had a question first. The, when would the closing actually be? So say the referendum does pass, when would an actual closing be? Like, how long does that take after that?
So we began to put together a timeline of things, and with the thoughts that the BPU approves anything that goes forward, it probably would not be until June or July of 2022.
And you might not know this yet, but on the voter referendum, is the question, who actually does the wording of that question?
And that will actually be part of the ordinance that comes before the council, and as well as the public will, you know, this will be posted, so yes. And that's part of, you know, that's part of the process to kind of have some, make sure there's some clarity, and also, you know, how they have the questions, and then they have the
Right. Yeah, it's, yeah, I mean, just to echo what you said, I would implore all residents to really do their homework. This is a huge, huge, huge thing for Allendale. I mean, everybody really needs to do their homework, and you have done such an amazing job educating the borough and everybody. I mean, all the work that you did, I know, is what brought us to where we are today. I truly 100% believe that. So we mean business, we, you know, we're not, we weren't sure that we wanted to sell this, we did our homework, you did your homework, and this is where we are now. So I just wanted to thank you so much for all that work that you did. I mean, nobody knows water better than you do. It is incredible amount of work, so.
Team effort, but to Amy's point, led by you in spades, I mean, you really, you've done it.
So that means we all have fun at my meetings?
No, let's not go that far.
I'm a lot bit pushing.
Let's not get carried away, but we do thank you for everything you've done. I mean, look, these are volunteer jobs, you've taken it to a new level and to the benefit of all of the residents.
Congratulations.
Okay, so I'm going to give my report. May 31, Memorial Day, Allendale came together as a community to remember and honor those that made the ultimate sacrifice for our freedoms. It was, it was a moving day, it was a moving event. I heard so many, I don't take credit for, I was thrilled to be a part of it, but I saw many, the feedback was great. I was honored to join my fellow members of the council, veterans in our community, our emergency service members, and many residents. And this was the first event we'd had since the start of the pandemic, with the case of COVID on the decline here in Allendale, Bergen County, we felt it was important to honor these heroes in person. I want to take a moment to thank the committee who put the ceremony together. OEM Director Mike Dillon, phenomenal job. Ron Kistner, thank you. I know, you know, the hours put in. Tyler Yakarino, John Gill, Miguel Grande, phenomenal job. I think he led the ceremony, he was really, he was outstanding. Joe Chiniachi, wonderful. The members of the Allendale Holiday Observers. I also want to congratulate our Memorial Day essay winners, Harris Morgus Morris and Gabrielle Regazzo. If you'd like to watch the ceremony, we have posted a video on the borough's website and Facebook page, and thank you to all who attended, and we look forward to next year's ceremony, where we can return to the normal with our parade and our festivities at the firehouse, beer and hot dogs and everything else. As I mentioned, COVID cases in Allendale, Bergen County are on the decline, the vaccine is now widely available, great signs. We have been discussing, we, in fact, we discussed that our administration meeting today plans to hopefully open up a Borough Hall sometime soon, but whether it's opened or not, from day one, the town has been functioning and all of the services are available. So, you know, whether we're doing it in person, or you're knocking on the door and someone's coming to get it, or you're doing it through Bell Pilot, the dedicated borough employees have been working nonstop since the beginning. We took a bad situation and we made it work, and to everyone, all borough employees, we say thank you. Last Sunday, I had the honor of attending a Gold Award Ceremony for Farrah Pabri, Ayana Amin, and Julia Granaccia. The Gold Award is the highest award a Girl Scout can achieve. I want to applaud each of them for their hard work and perseverance. Again, congratulations on attaining this prestigious award and the right to forever be called Gold Award recipient.
Council President Liz Holman, you did an outstanding job with that.
The girls are tremendous, so it's an honor.
This weekend, I'm looking forward to presenting letters and commendations at an Eagle Court of Honor Ceremony for the Boy Scout Troop 59 in Allendale. Between all these talented and dedicated young adults in our community, Allendale's future is looking bright. And with that, that said, I end my report. Attorney Ray Wiss?
Well, as was mentioned by Councilwoman Wosinski, it was a two-week quiet period relatively on 2/20, 2/30, particularly when measured against the month that preceded that.
I ran into Tom two days ago, and he was having withdrawals, he said.
I don't believe that for a minute.
I know.
Well, I've kept him out of the limelight because the, that time has now been usurped by the Water Committee.
I just need attention, I guess.
But it has been, actually, as was mentioned by Councilwoman Holman, a very, you know, interesting and busy period, evaluating the proposal of SUEZ, now translating that proposal into a written agreement or a contract, and then obviously there are very, very strict timelines to be adhered to leading up to the referendum. So I anticipate that that will continue to be very busy, and we're hopeful, as was mentioned, that if on 2/20, Hampshire gets its approval from the Bergen County Planning Board, then we will be moving forward forthwith on the second aspect of that closing.
Extremely fast, yeah.
You know, and we anticipate that it will all go expeditiously and satisfactorily. Beyond that, working with Mr. Kistner on the promotional matters to the Police Department on certain personnel matters, and on some property maintenance matters with the Borough Clerk's Office on Oprah, the never-ending Oprah responses, which are not only numerous, but more recently, I would say, are more complex than ever before. Multiple parts which require a constant outreach by Michelle and her department to other departments within the municipality. So it's, it's become beyond busy, it's actually been onerous. And then Mr. Kistner and I are also working on some affordable housing issues, actually related to units that have already been approved, and certain issues that have arisen with respect to those units. And that's pretty much kept us busy the last two weeks.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for all your hard work. Michelle?
Thank you. Tuesday's primary election went smoothly. Thank you to Tatiana and John, Ron, Dan Richards, Rich McDowell, the Police Department, Chief Sherb, and Officer Helmer, for all their assistance to make it run smoothly. Last Thursday, the Bergen County Board of Elections reached out to us in a panic and said, we don't have any board workers help. So we all kind of jumped into, you know, figuring out, like, just trying to think who would be a board worker, and, or who could be a board worker, because it's a, it's a big commitment to be there from 5:15 in the morning till 8:30 or later at night. So I just wanted to thank, we reached out to the Allendale Democratic Club and the Republican Club, and they came through. Allendale had a full complement of board workers, and a lot of towns, you know, didn't. So they really came through for us, and actually, we got a call from the Board of Elections today to say thank you to everyone, so.
Great.
Yeah, I really appreciate, I really appreciate that.
You made them feel good, too.
Right.
So, and then we just continued to process Crestwood Lake registrations, pet licenses, compost permits, Oprah's garage sales, and, you know, we're busy. So I also wanted to thank the governing body and Ron for hiring Judy Collins for the summer to help out in our office. I think she's gonna really help, and we'll get everything done a little quicker, or a lot quicker, actually.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ron, anything?
Everything's been covered pretty much. The only thing due to the beautiful Crestwood Lake is, and in my mind, my legendary barbecue skills, we're going to have the July 8, July 4, we do the, the Northwest Administrators enjoy their yearly barbecue with Mike cooking, and they invite the mayors, their own mayors. So we'll be returning from that, from last year's absence. I'm reaching out to the county executive, Tedesco, he's been gracious enough to be the speaker the last couple of years, and as long as I can from a few cheeseburgers, I'm pretty sure he'll be there again this year.
Great.
So that'll be July 8, you'll all be welcome up.
Great.
And we are in negotiations, I guess, with the Northwest Mayors Association to have their event, I believe, in September.
Yes.
At Crestwood Lake as well.
The episode of River Mayor, and I have been touting your skills, I don't want to say beyond your skill set, but the bar has been set very high.
Remember, cigar smoking is required.
That's right. I'm sure we'll have a lot of takers there, that's all right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Lissa, would you like to give anything you'd like to add to your report, or given your report?
I just want to, you know, reiterate that it was a very difficult budget this year, and I think we did the best we could under the circumstances. I want to thank all of those who helped put it together, and I look forward to a much better budget season next year.
I do, too. Yes. From your mouth to God's ears. Oh, it's great. There are no eighties in Foxhole. I open the floor to the, to the public. Anyone on any items?
Hi, Mayor, it's Mark Savistano.
Yes, Mark?
Good evening again. A quick question for Councilmember Holman about the, the water sale. Will the other bids that were rejected be available for public viewing, or only the one that was accepted?
I would say at some point, the answer will be, yes, they will be available, but the earliest, Mark, that I would envision that would be when we are post-contract with SUEZ.
Oh, okay.
And obviously, you understand the reason there is to avoid any competitive advantage that may occur during the contract drafting process.
Oh, okay, so it hasn't been accepted as the bid yet, is that correct?
They've been identified as the highest responsible bidder, but They've been identified as the highest responsible bidder, but as was mentioned, the, the bid ultimately has to get translated into language in a contract. So that is a subtle process and you don't want to give any cues to what someone else may have said in their bid.
Yes, understood. Okay.
Thanks, Mark. Thanks, Ray.
You're welcome. The, was that Michelle that was speaking earlier about the, the primary? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yes, okay. A quick question for Michelle then. Is, is it correct that only a Democrat or Republican can be a member of that board that helps? So can an independent voter also be president? Do you have to identify as Republican or Democrat?
Um, and unaffiliated, an independent cannot be a board worker, I believe, but a unaffiliated voter, registered voter can. They just have to decide which party they are going to be a board worker for. The Republicans are the.
Okay, so you do have to identify before you could be a board worker.
But it does not change your voter affiliation to be a board worker at, on primary day. You just say, I would like to be, I'll represent the Democratic Party as a board worker, but it doesn't change, it doesn't make you a Democrat.
Okay, thank you for that answer. And if I may, Mayor, I just wanted to speak briefly about our efforts, Jim and I with the the Green Team and report that that's going very well. We had a very interesting meeting. We had a guest speaker, Ken Jones from Glen Rock, speaking about electric vehicles. And that generated a long discussion about half of our meeting. Perhaps a way that we might be able to get some funding in Allendale for some charging stations in the future. Also, our efforts with Styrofoam continue successfully. And last but not least, I had generated some interest with Patricia Durso of the Lee Memorial Library and also with one of the teachers in Hillside who has agreed to have collection bins at Hillside and Brookside. And Patty has already collected about 150 pounds of VHS tapes, CDs and DVDs that I have unfortunately been storing in my garage now. And we'll have to begin shipping them out to the two locations that accept those for recycling. But I was excited by the response, both by Mr. Durso and by the public, bringing those materials to be collected. So the Green Team is moving along.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for all your work and for your efforts.
Mark, the, one thing, and I, I got excited about all my water news, but I did want to, in my report, and I'll say the Green Team too, to talk about the composting units that residents can get through the Bergen County. Am I going around and load it? The Bergen County Facility Authority? Yes. And there, I mean, they sell them at cost and the amount, the weight of your, you know, the garbage that can go into a composting unit is amazing. I mean, just think about a watermelon rind. And so we've been doing it and it's so awesome to open up the drawer and see that beautiful brown, dark, dark brown dirt with all the worms in it. It's unbelievable. So if we could get people doing composting, obviously correctly, safely contained so that there aren't rodents, that, that would be really a huge step forward, I think, in limiting garbage going to, you know, one in Phillips Center.
I share your enthusiasm about composting and I hope you'll join one of our meetings, Council.
Guys can continue this offline. So I would request, with that said, I would request a motion to return the, the regular session.
So moved.
Great. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Great, thank you.
All right, goodnight, everyone.
And the worms?